Alrighty, folks, welcome. I'd like to begin the Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting for October 27th. Thank you all for joining us. I will begin this evening with any public participation. And seeing none, we will move on. The reorganization, so Chris Eklund has rejoined the committee. We're thrilled. He's been very generous with his time and has assumed Leslie Ann's seat for the remainder of this year. He is joining us tonight. He's tied up in a meeting. He'll be here shortly. But we do need to reorg now that Leslie Ann is off the committee. So what I would like to do is see if there is first any nominations for the role of Secretary for the committee.
I'd like to nominate Lucas. I could speak to him about this. Just traditionally, we have had a member from the executive side of the board. And he's been with us for a few years now. He's run for reelection for the position. And he's really stepped up on several of the subcommittees. I'd like to see him have the opportunity to take this leadership.
Okay.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. And then if we could take a moment and just look at the rest of the org chart, there's a couple of more places. I will mention that between Leslie Ann's resignation and now, we did have some negotiating subcommittee meetings. And I did appoint Chris to the negotiating subcommittee. He had sat on that committee before. It made perfect sense to have Chris rejoin because he could jump in and hit the ground running. So I'm just formally making that announcement this evening. So you'll see Chris's name under the negotiating subcommittee. We do need under Safer and Alternate to replace Leslie Ann as alternate. And actually, that probably, we should think about this committee because when Chris rejoined, I had specifically asked him if he would once again take a lead role on the Safer Subcommittee. So I'm willing to put myself in as the alternate unless somebody else would like to take that alternate role and put Chris in as a standing member.
Does that require a motion?
No. But if everybody's okay with that, I like consensus though. Okay. So Karen, if you want to put me as the alternate for Safer and give Chris my seat there, that would be great. That's currently, you ladies.
I think it would be good to have a third person just to have like conversations.
Okay.
Does anyone want to try?
What is calendar?
We were, do you remember last spring, I don't think I was a member of the committee yet, when you approved the last calendar, there were some questions about like which days would be holidays and what they'd be called on the calendar. I think Leslie Ann actually brought it up. And we had decided, well, you had decided at the time that it was, I think someone made a motion to create a committee to talk about that, to loop in the other school committees as well. But we haven't met yet this year. So.
I'll throw myself on that, I guess.
I think you're already on it.
Yeah.
And we do have some.
You're mine then. The two of us. Oh, okay.
We do have some folks not here this evening as well. So you know, we can leave that one and populate it after as well if we want. Okay. And then school start time, that was Leslie Ann and Emily. I don't know if somebody else, did you already offer to? Go ahead.
Nobody else wants to do that. I've been part of that committee in the past.
School start time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Be happy to help out with that one, you said.
And then I think that completes, we'll leave calendar review for next time. We'll see if one of the other folks want to join that. So Karen, we're good other than one opening. Wonderful. Thank you all. Okay. Chris, welcome. I spoke to you rejoining our committee and publicly thanked you for giving the district your time and your experience again.
You're welcome.
We're excited.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, we're so excited to have you, believe me. So next on the agenda, approval of minutes from.
Motion to approve the minutes from our September 8, 2022 meeting, September 20, 2022 meeting?
Seven.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Very good, thank you. Did you, I apologize, are you abstaining or did you?
I read my approval, that's fine.
Okay, all right, very good.
Madam Chair, I would like to move the motion to move Agenda Item 5 to Agenda Item 4 and recognize the M.A.S.S. Award recipients.
Can I have a second on that, please? Second? Okay. All those in favor of moving those agenda items? Thank you. And I'll turn it over to our superintendent for the award.
Thank you. So on behalf of the Mass Association of School Superintendents, I'm honored to present two certificates of academic excellence to two graduating seniors each year. This award is given to two Silver Lake High School students who have distinguished themselves in pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. Both Anna Billings and Caroline McKenna, who is here with us this evening, have distinguished themselves in terms of their three-year cumulative average, and both are in the top 5% of the class of 2023. Caroline McKenna is a member of field hockey band, marching band, jazz band, and drama. She is a member of our school's Journalism Club and National Honor Society. She has consistently made the honor roll throughout her high school career. She has worked at CVS since 10th grade and has volunteered at the Kingston Public Library for three years. She is a member of the Youth Advisory Council at the Kingston Public Library. Caroline loves making up stories. She would like to be a writer someday, and although she is currently undecided about her major in college, she is interested in math, creative writing, English, and comparative literature. Caroline McKenna exemplifies dedication to academic excellence. She has both served as a leader and has dedicated herself to serving others. We hope you continue to use your academic talents to make life better for others in these ways, and we are so proud and honored to recognize you tonight for your achievements.
You know, on behalf of the school committee, I wish you continued success. What a very busy, robust, and rich schedule you keep, and I wish you all the best going to college and experience it the way you've experienced high school. That's so wonderful. So much luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm applying to Chicago on Saturday, so yeah.
Wow.
Early decision.
They'll be lucky to have you.
Absolutely. Good luck.
Send your thoughts that way.
And we also took you out of order because we know how busy you are, and we don't want to keep you out too late, but thank you and your family for being here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, congratulations.
If I could just take a moment to thank the school and the school system for all they've done for Caroline and our son Jake, who's a sophomore. We really appreciate the support and the effort that teachers, the administration, and the school board have done, certainly for our family, and I know for many, well, all the families and kids. And so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too, now take care. Okay. Lynch, Marini, and Associates, Grady.
Good evening. My name is Grady Connor. I'm one of the partners with Lynch, Marini, and Associates, where the auditors for the school district. And the committees asked me here tonight for the kind of the annual summary of the audit of the district for the year ending June 30, 2021. And I think we folks have, would have the summary. So the purpose of the audit is for us to issue an independent audit report and express an opinion on the district's financial statements. The audit's conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, commonly referred to as the Yellow Book. Those standards require us to issue a report on internal controls over financial reporting of the district and also on compliance. And the district expended more than $750,000 in federal awards for fiscal year '21. So it was required to have a single audit in accordance with OMB guidance. Management's responsibility in the process, management's responsible for designing, implementing, and maintaining internal controls over financial reporting in compliance with laws and regulations, for establishing financial policies and procedures, for ensuring that all financial information is reliable and reported properly, and also for the preparation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. As the auditors, we assist the district in preparation of those financial statements, but ultimately, management is responsible for them, and we do review the financial statements in draft format with management before they are issued. So the results of the audit, the results of the independent audit's report on the financial statements, we reported an unmodified opinion for June 30 to '21. An unmodified opinion basically says that the financial statements, in our professional judgment, are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the opinion that you wanted as an entity. On the financial statements themselves, they're basically in a couple components. The government-wide financial statements combine the district's operations on a full accrual basis, basically reporting all the assets, liabilities, and deferred outflows and inflows. Again, on that statement, the most significant capital assets are the capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation, so all your buildings and your equipment. Year-end, those were about $48.3 million. Then you've got the long-term liabilities that are due in more than one year. Those aggregated about $71 million. Again, the big components of those were the bonds payable of $7.4 million, the net OPEB obligation, other post-employment benefits of $57.5 million, and then the net pension liability of about $6.1 million. And leaving the aggregate net position in a deficit at year-end of about $7.8 million, which is made up of three pieces, the investment in capital assets of $40 million, restricted net position of about $1,002,000, those are all the grants and revolving funds at year-end. And then the unrestricted net position was in a deficit of about $49 million, again, related to the OPEB and the pension liability. Again, a deficit in net position is fairly common in most municipalities in Massachusetts due to those obligations, so it's not anything unusual. The next set of statements are the fund basis statements, which are pretty close to what you would see on the district's accounting records on a daily basis. At year-end, the district in the general fund reported $2.3 million in the general fund, which was an increase of about $353,000 from the prior fiscal year. Of that balance, committed fund balance of about $1 million is what the committees have set aside for capital improvements. The assigned fund balance of about $239,000 was the carryover encumbrances into fiscal '22. And then the unassigned fund balance was everything that was left was about $1,001. So for the year, again, comprising that, you had revenues of $32.8 and expenditures of $32.5. During fiscal '21, as you know, the district did perform a bond refunding, realizing debt service savings of about $406,000 over the life of that debt service. The remaining other governmental funds in the fund basis statements are all the district's special revenue funds. Those aggregated about $1,002. During fiscal '21, GASB, there was a new accounting standard that was required to be implemented, and that related to fiduciary activities. Reviewing those under that new pronouncement, the scholarship funds and student activity funds were reclassified as governmental activities. So that was part of the reason why those went up in aggregate. At June 30, the district maintains the OPEB trust fund about $201,000. The report, again, under government auditing standards, Yellow Book, we didn't report any deficiencies or non-compliance in internal controls over financial reporting. And finally, in regard to the single audit, the major programs that were tested for fiscal '21 were the Coronavirus Relief Fund and also the SPED Cluster. Our report was unmodified on compliance, again, basically stating that we did not find any direct material, anything non-compliance to have a direct material effect on those awards. We did not report any deficiencies in internal controls over grant compliance. Again, for the fiscal year, the district spent about $2.4 million in federal expenditures. We did report, similar to the prior year, another matter, just again, continued enhancement of formalized documentation over the grant internal control policies and procedures. Again, that's a, just giving away auditing standards in OMB, these days, that's pretty much a common finding in most of our clients as well. Again, nothing of a major issue. So that's kind of just an overview. Again, the district is pretty good to share. Any questions that I can answer for anybody?
Any questions? Go ahead, Jason.
So I had the pleasure of working the three when I was the treasurer of Silver Lake Regional Schools, and I was thrilled when he made the mention that we should probably move to a professional treasurer. And having moved to a professional treasurer, I am eternally grateful. It was also Grady's insight that started us putting some money into the OPEB trust fund. It's considered a black hole municipal, but just the fact that we're addressing it and we realize it's there looming, you appreciate that insight. And unmodified finding is what I consider a clean finding. And Christine, in your office, really appreciate you keeping the book so clean and running the ship straight for us. We appreciate it.
I try.
I know you do. You do a great job. I make a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Any further discussion? I have just one question. Are we still going to get the hard copy bound copy of it?
I actually do have a copy, the hard copy. They did send those to us, so I can have those distributed. I could bring them to the next meeting.
Okay.
Actually, God, I'll bring them tonight. Do they really want them? I'd be happy to bring them to you.
Alrighty, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grady.
Thanks, take care.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Grady.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Seaview Learning Certification, the Camp Norris issue that we carried over from our September meeting. So certainly augment me and chime in here, but we ended up getting sent to us everything that is on the DESI checklist for what we should have reviewed, which we had administration do that review of the material. There was one thing missing, and it was a certificate of inspection.
Yes. Camp Norris had contacted the Boy Scouts. I'm not sure what their relationship is to the physical structure, but apparently they have the building inspection certificate. So they requested it, but we have not received that.
Having everything else and having it reviewed and having discussions with Russ on this topic as well, we are in a position to give it our approval, if you will. And that's the right term for what we want to do here?
Yes, and I think maybe what you could add is, and that you would notify DESI that you received all the information except for the inspection.
Okay, all right. So if we want to make that motion, we can do so. There's nothing really.
What exactly is the motion that we're approving their certification? Because I'll make it, I just want to make it right away.
It's that you're approving the private school to operate.
Within the district?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve Seaview Learning Academy to operate within the district and certify them for grades K through 12.
Do we need to have the language in there that we're certifying? Yeah?
No. And I think they're actually.
Because they're only K through 8, and we're doing tonight 12 now.
So Kingston approved K through 6. We would be looking at grades 7 through 12.
Okay, so I am in my motion to approve grade 7 through 12.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Karen, are you good with that, that language? Okay. I just.
I'm ready to motion. For the district, grade 7 through 12.
Okay. Alrighty, you took out the certified.
No certification.
Okay.
To operate within the district.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you. Alrighty, legal brief, the Juul vaping litigation.
So we received communication, I received communication from Tom Scott from the Mass Association of School Superintendents notifying superintendents of a case that seeks to hold Juul and other companies producing vaping products financially responsible for enticing adolescents to begin vaping and for the resulting harm to young people. Because vaping impacts the educational environment, plaintiffs seek damages for school systems in the form of vape detectors and curriculum. In order to participate, we would need to vote on this issue tonight, and we would, the chair would sign an affidavit which has been reviewed by our legal counsel attorney DuPerray. The case is scheduled for trial in San Francisco in November. It is not proceeding as a class action, so therefore, access to damages, if awarded, are limited to actively participating plaintiffs rather than to claimants who are members of a broad class or group of entities of people suffering harm. Participation would require a vote of the committee, and a district commitment would require submission of an affidavit. Mass Association of School Superintendents is not endorsing or discouraging participation in this case.
Is there any cost to us participating?
So what I said to clients is that the cost could be that you actually have to potentially put in some effort into the case, like providing documents, providing proof of amity, those type of things. It's probably unlikely that they're going to require all the different schools to do that, but that would be one thing. The second potential cost would be if they asked somebody from the district to be a witness in the court action, then we'd have to send somebody there, and the person would have to, you know, have that cost. Other than that, there really isn't a cost to it. The potential benefit is, what I've heard is it seems like there might be, like you'll get testing kits for Juul's devices so that you can tell if it has one on them, that type of thing. So I have a few that have joined now because of the notice from Tom Scott. Before that, I don't think I had anybody join. So it's really up to you. It's kind of a, I'm not, I don't think you're going to get a huge benefit out of it. I also don't think there's going to be a huge downside if you join. The benefit of being a private school in this type of case, I can't imagine you're going to get tens of thousands of dollars probably, but you might get something that helps detect the devices and maybe some small monetary, is my best guess.
I'm going to open it up to any other questions. I just want to, in my mind, I sort of almost see it a little symbolic, if you will, that we've been fighting this for so long with the kids, to do something that shows that we are really opposed to this type of activity. It's just my kind of personal comment there. Jason?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what you said, but you know, it's to support the kids in the struggle against fighting addiction before it starts. And unfortunately, once it's commenced, you know, the high school's program of helping students understand what addiction is, you know, is a brilliant move, I believe, on my part, instead of making a punitive, trying to encourage the kids to look at themselves and why they may have made those decisions in life. But if anything we can do to disrupt that business model that unfortunately has either on purpose or inadvertently targeted children, I think that we should take one.
Summer?
I'll just mention that at our Health Act School Committee meeting, the committee voted to participate in the litigation.
Okay, that's actually helpful to know.
Did you discuss a filter?
We haven't had our meeting yet, but that's good to know. I appreciate you mentioning that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we, how do I say it, support or join the litigation against Juul for the promotion of vaping products to student operation.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Excellent, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Principals reports, well, we're in the middle school, so that always invites you to begin.
Thank you.
Welcome this evening.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me. I just have two items. One is an out-of-state field trip approval request for a seventh-grade team to hopefully go to Canada Lake Park at the end of the year. That's in Salem, New Hampshire. So that would be about 94, 100 students.
So moved.
So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Very good. Thank you.
The next item, which you all probably are aware of, but I did not get the honor of meeting Charles Demuehl, but he passed away at the end of the school year last year. And one of our most fabulous educators are here tonight, who not only had Chucky in class, but also heads our Hospitality Committee, called Laker of Love. Would like to say a few words about Charles before we accept the donation in his name.
Thank you. Good evening.
This is Janine Napster, by the way.
Oh, sorry.
I did not say her name. Janine Napster.
That's not the important stuff. That's, thank you very much, Ms. Kline. Good evening. First and foremost, thank you to every one of you here this evening for finding time to allow me to speak on behalf of the students and staff at our middle school. Your monthly agendas are extremely ambitious, and so I'm very grateful for you carving out a few moments for me. I am here to share without question the saddest reason I have ever reached out to our school community in my entire life. On Thursday, June 23 of 2022, we all came to school to spend time together, tie up loose ends, clean our classrooms, prepare for a much-needed break, and most importantly, enjoy our kids for one more morning. All of us said our "have a great summers," and we all went our separate ways. That evening was a joyous, warm, silly, carefree, relaxing first night of summer for every Silver Lake family except for one. Through the generosity of the staff and the Silver Lake Regional School District, we brought the Demuehl Riley family food. We sent. We sent flowers to memorial services. We gave the family over one thousand dollars in gift cards to local establishments and stores. And still had leftover money toward a more permanent celebration of Charles's life. In August of this year, Liliana Parmigiani reached out to Ms. Coet and I and proposed a fundraising endeavor. That would create a permanent remembrance for her schoolmate, Charles DeMule. This was by far the most painful, beautiful, rewarding, humbling fundraiser I have ever done. Ever done, ever done, ever done. I feel like I have used that phrase a countless number of times when referencing the most tragic experience of my educational career. Charles DeMule was one of the oldest and one of the tiniest students in the class of twenty twenty-seven. Despite being chronically allergic to dozens of things, suffering from several autoimmune diseases. Living many years in emotional turmoil and having many learning exceptionalities. He presented himself in the most positive way he could every day. Every day of his life was hard. Every day of his life, there was a mountain to climb, a hurdle to jump, and a physical and emotional struggle to overcome. But in true Charles fashion, and that's what we called him, the kids call him Chuck. Every single day he got up, he looked in the mirror and he chose to persevere. He was kind, he was grateful, and he was fragile. He went home on the last day of school, just like all of us and the five hundred plus students did. Thinking this is going to be the best summer ever. But he didn't. He went home and through a series of typically common activities. Somehow he fell unimaginably victim to the most severe allergic reaction he had ever had. And tragically did not make it to see the first full day of summer break. Subsequently, I spent the entire summer grieving and trying to figure out how I could have done a better job. How could I have possibly been a better teacher, a better confidant, therapist, parent, healer, mentor, and friend to Charles? My emotional brain figured that if I tried harder and I did better, he would be here. My intellectual brain surely knows that that is absolutely not true. And honestly, I really don't know much in the world, even though I'm considerably older than most of the folks in this room right now. But because of Charles, there are a few things that I definitely know. I know that Charles had a really hard life. And I know that even in the toughest of times, Charles knew he was loved by all of us here at this middle school. I know that everything we did mattered to Charles. I know that every minute he was here in this school, he felt safe, nurtured, and cared about. By every person on campus that he interacted with. I know that he described in his own words. That his last full day of school and especially the end of year cookout was awesome. And he had the time of his life. Finally, I know that every word we say and every action we complete here each day. Matters to the kids that we teach and take care of here in the Silver Lake Regional School District. And I know that it is of the utmost importance that Charles DeMule, a member of the Silver Lake class of twenty twenty-seven. Be honored and remembered by all of us today, tomorrow, and for the duration. With the support of Liliana and the Parmigiani family. We have raised over two thousand dollars for a memorial bench to be installed by Quincy Memorials. Our hope is to invite the entire school community for a brief dedication ceremony in November. Thank you for your time and for your attention, and I really am truly grateful to be a member of the Silver Lake family.
I I almost don't even know how to respond to that. That was beautiful.
Thank you.
Heartfelt. And I don't know when that is in November, but I would love to be there for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You did a fantastic job of sharing him with us.
I love it. I told him every day I loved him. Every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just need to to accept the donation that came from every part of the community. And drugs and drabs and the half day from the school.
We did a half day. We did-
The kids were involved.
You know, let's cheer for Charles.
Chuck.
I move that we accept the fundraising donations for a memorial bench in honor of Charles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please let us know when in in November.
I surely will.
Please, thank you.
And it will probably be at dusk, maybe four, four-thirty in the afternoon. Very brief. Very beautiful, and all of the kids are helping. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Michaela? I know.
I should have gone first. One of these days I'll make it through a school committee meeting without cranks. Thank you. I wanted to give you an update after last month's meeting when I requested for the out of state field trip for our music program. I just want to provide you with an update because at the time we were torn between two different locations. With the input of students and their families, we have secured a flight to Disney. So I just wanted to give you an update. The kids are excited. Fundraising has already started. So thank you again for your support for that out of state field trip. It's good to have that tradition back on the calendar. On behalf of the America's Hometown Thanksgiving Celebration. Chairman Ollie DiMascio would like to donate two thousand dollars to the Silver Lake Athletic Department. Provide complimentary student tickets for home athletic games.
So moved.
So.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure we give a nice thank you note off to the committee. And then Becky and I have a presentation to share. I believe it's item eight in the shared folder. Requested last month. For us to provide just some more detailed information about bullying and harassment and sort of our. Protocols in response when incidents are reported to us. So I'll give you a minute to open up these slides.
Oh, you clicked right on that one. Yeah.
Okay.
It's called Student Safety.
So being new, I had the honor of of reading some school committee policy. I haven't talked through the whole thing. I have to tell you. Um, but we thank you for being a partner in this work. We put a quote on the first page right from your school committee policy. And we really appreciate that you promote civil rights and protecting students from harassment, bullying, and hate crimes. Um, on the second slide, I kind of delineated the difference between bullying and harassment. And bullying is really the repeated use, right, of a written, verbal, electronic expression of physical act. Harassment generally is the one time or one or for multiple different kids. Harassment in conduct that could offend or show disrespect, generally upon age, color, sex, disability. Gender, national origin, race, religion, homelessness, limited English proficiency, or sexual orientation. And we have a pretty strict process here when it comes to to both bullying and harassment. But there's a much formalized process for bullying and there's an initiation, of course, of the incident. And then immediately there's an investigation procedure. If substantiated or not, we initiate an action plan. And then we finalize incident reports, continually monitoring behavior even year after. And continue working with all students and making sure that, you know, there is no more incidents of bullying in that in that regard.
And I think too, just to add to that, as part of the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. At the end of their eighth grade year, we have a transition meeting with counselors and administration. And we review any safety plans or behavior plans that may be in place for incoming freshmen. We reach out to families and we connect with students to make sure if those plans are the same as at the high school that they're carried over. And on the next slide, just sharing some data with you. And reviewing our incidents at both the middle school and the high school, so grade seven through twelve. There are actually very few substantiated bullying incidents in the last six years. I would say though that there are many more cases that are substantiated civil rights violations, discriminatory behaviors, and harassments. Per our handbook, these offenses are suspendable when there's a claim of bullying. Or suspected. There's a prescribed process that again administration follows as part of that investigation. And I think I've made it very clear before that we take all reports of racism and harassment and discrimination very seriously. And we conduct an investigation to each of those claims. And when substantiated, discipline is in our way. And the next slide, just to give you an overview of some steps that we might take, again, like Becky pointed out. Whether it's substantiated or not, we do work to support students. And we may develop a student safety plan. We may develop a behavior plan. Those safety plans and behavior plans are shared with the appropriate staff members. The notice may include a photo of all students, right? So as a teacher, you may have one of the students in your classroom, but if there's a conflict with another student, we provide a picture so that you know. When you're keeping an eye on that student to look for. A behavior plan, some examples of things that might be included could be a pass restriction, escorts if necessary. And then our support team has grown this year with the implementation of our data coaches. But that includes our guidance department, our adjustment counselor, our school resource officer, our assistant principals. And our data coaches. And these are all individuals in the building who can provide additional support. Either as a cohesive team, supporting that student or commit their family. Or if we find it's better to pair a student off individually with an adult that they can connect with in the building to help them. I also just want to point out that. These are teenagers, right? And they make poor choices sometimes or they make mistakes. But it's also an opportunity to learn from those poor choices or those mistakes. And so discipline isn't always because they're a bad kid, right? It could be an underlying concern. Sometimes it's manifestation of something else is going on in their lives. So we do try to, you know, incorporate that whole team, look big picture when supporting these students. It's not just about prescribing discipline. It really is about helping the student grow and learn from that experience. Which is why discipline is often progressive and you may not necessarily get a suspension the first time. You start with a detention or a sedentary detention or an in-school. So, um, you know, we also, I think. Informally over the last several years have we moved towards a more restorative justice. Kind of discipline, which involves, you know, staff members, families, and the students. Really trying to hone in on what is the root of the behavior or what is the root of the activity? That may be more negative between students. And then also on this slide is just an example of our QR code that's posted on our website. It's around the school building and every classroom and back door stalls. So that students, staff, families can anonymously report any concerns that they may have. Administration gets an instant notification when these forms are filled out. They have the choice of leaving their name and information if they'd like, if they're comfortable and they feel like sharing more information with us, we can follow up with them. But at the very least, we want to be able to provide an avenue for our community to report any concerns that they may have.
And we stole the idea from Michaela and I, that's why a lot of us have heard it.
We share. Didn't steal, we share.
How often do you see somebody submit something through that channel?
I would say probably about once a month. I mean, I can pull up the data real quick, maybe the timestamp, but I I about once a month or so. And some sometimes it's. Something that probably could have, is maybe more minor. And I think the student may just not feel comfortable talking to anybody, right? And it's a great opportunity to connect with that student and kind of introduce them to their counselor or something like that. But some of them have been pretty significant and it's given us information that is led to an investigation to. Better support students who are in conflict. And I and I will also say it's, we have seen submissions from student and families. So our parents are also listening.
And I think, Michaela, you you leaning into the restorative justice portion of dealing with student behaviors. And Becky, you coming on board with it too. Is really going to feed well into some of the changes we're going to see in state law and student disciplining. Where we're trying to discourage the suspension, the exclusion of students from school. Because we know that that's one of the leading indicators for the school to prison pipeline. We're trying to shut that down and keep them where they can learn from their mistakes in that supportive environment. So I know you've been ahead of the curve on this. Appreciate that leadership.
And I'll have one more question. I don't know if anybody else does, but how. When are parents brought into it? Like what what level or what type of incident brings a parent?
Pretty immediately, yeah. Our assistant principals or if it's a counselor who's taking the initial report sometimes. Parent notification is one of the first things to take place.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is, this is helpful and I for one would just like to periodically throughout the school year. Kind of get a pulse of how things are going. In this particular area. If you would.
Absolutely. I believe that's all I have. I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this. Okay. Alright, Christine, I think we are moving on to you.
Thank you very much. On your pro books tonight, you can access tonight's meeting. I'm trying to find the right terminology to use to guide you instead of saying, can you package this night? So then we'll be in financial on to tonight's category.
Oh my god, Christine.
Well, I'm trying to find a way to make this work better so that you can, I don't know, blow it up. I'm not sure what the right term is.
I don't know how big I just made it, but I can finally see it.
Good thing is, it's not that much to, um, we're doing pretty well. The good news is that our budget is doing a nice job of sustaining us and the activities that are happening. Right now, much of the activity has been encumbered and that's based on prior year actual information, any contractual information that I have for the current year. Last month, we talked about a few deficits that we have, which we still have. On page two of the detail, there's a deficit under due to the principals area. And those are just either increases that have happened or some new dues that have developed. And then just pass that as the graduation account. And we'll just have a case of what the costs are for graduation. And and the schools are really helpful getting all that information in. They already have everything booked for the end of the school year. So the good thing is we can start using this information as I'm developing the twenty-four budget. So normally that information wouldn't be in there until later in the year. So we know this now so that we can start looking into twenty-four and having realistic numbers going into next year. One of the other areas that talked about last month is is to go deeper into the financial. Is on under our insurance account on the property and casualty. There is a deficit there of thirty-five hundred dollars. Let me just get to that area quickly for you. That is on page five of the detail. At the top of the page is a deficit just under thirty-five hundred. But then there's also a surplus of seventy thousand dollars just past that in my, the workers' compensation account. When I budget those non-employee insurances, I kind of budget them collectively because I get a discount on them for collectively. And so sometimes the discount works better in some areas than others. And as you can see, the other areas still still do have surpluses. That's the one area where there isn't. And those accounts are pretty much complete for the year. We're we're not expecting much more activity. Because I paid you the earlier in the year, you get the the early discount for the year. And then the one other I didn't want to bring to your attention is the very last accounts. And it's special education transportation. You're going to get sick of hearing me talk about this. We did our best to do what we could with the activity and the vendors. We had very little change in the activity, the numbers of students, but we're still struggling with the vendors. And we're working diligently to find more local vendors. And Vanpool is really helpful with trying to be able to bring on some of our students back. You've had some newer drivers. But we're still experiencing a deficit there. But we are working to get our students back under their umbrella. That's where it is right now, that deficit of twenty-five thousand to the middle school and the high school. Are there any questions?
Motion to accept this, to approve this petition. Second.
Do we usually accept it?
So we have been for the past six months or so.
It was in Santa Fe. It's more recently.
From MASC.
Okay.
As custodians of the budget, as one of our three primary roles as school committee members. That monthly we should be acknowledging that role and approving Christmas.
Have I been doing that with you?
We have.
Okay, alright.
It's new.
Okay. Alright, I don't know where I've been the last five months mentally.
It's just to make sure that the school committee isn't only addressing the budget as a development. It's it's to make sure we're keeping the eye on it as well throughout the process.
Okay. And so I think I had a a motion and a second? Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. I want me to do more questions.
Okay. All right, thank you, Christine. All righty, Ryan.
Thank you. Uh, inside of the electronic folder for school committee, we have item number nine, which is the Silver Lake Regional School District MCAS presentation. So, Principal Coet, Principal Gill, and myself will share some of this information. But before we begin, I, I want to also thank our curriculum coordinators. Nicole Fennis Evans here, who is the English seven through 12 coordinator, and also Kevin Sawyer, the math coordinator, and Scott Farrell, the science coordinator, helped in this data analysis, as well as our other curriculum coordinators as well to sort of become unified around our student achievement and growth goals. So, a lot of this work gets shared with teachers through the efforts of the coordinators. So I just want to recognize their contributions to the data analysis and the presentation. So, I don't have to, I won't read through every slide, but just sort of give you the highlights. And then if you have additional questions from your analysis, we're happy to answer them. Slide number two, for members of the public, there's a few cop, paper copies if you want to look at the slides over there.
I saw my kids MCAS.
Yeah, it's good timing that the, the family guardian reports came out last week. So slide number two is just a ref, refresh on the fact that in 19, there was a full test administration. In 2020, no tests were administered at the state level. And in 2021, that was the year of the half test. And in the spring of 2022, the full test was administered again. Slide three is just a slide from Destiny that talks about the statewide summary that, as you can imagine, after the pandemic, there was a drop in achievement. There's been some progress in math. ELA scores declined and science, science scores increased slightly. One important thing to think about that also applies to our district is that student absenteeism, as well as staff absenteeism, it remains a challenge. That when students can't, aren't attending school and staff are navigating a pandemic, we won't see the same achievement that we saw prior to that. So I think that's worth noting. Slide four just has the change since 2019. With the sort of the drop in statewide performance of students meeting or exceeding expectations and then 2022, there was some improvement and it looks like students across the state are, are, are gaining a little bit more ground. Slide five starts with a specific look at middle school ELA MCAS results. So if you look at slide five, you can see that 43% of Silver Lake students in grades seven and eight are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 41% statewide. You'll also see in that data that our district percentage of students exceeding the expectations is 2% versus the state's 6%. So we've stated as a focus area, really trying to expand the percentage of our students here in, in Silver Lake who are exceeding expectations as well as for the, the meeting expectations. Uh, the next slide is the middle school achievement over the past three years. So you can see that the meeting or exceeding percentage after 2019 certainly declines as expected with the pandemic. And last year, 43% of our middle school students were meeting or exceeding expectations. As the superintendent and district communicated, our goal really is to make more progress towards our students exceeding or meeting expectations. That's our measure of achievement. So we've stated that as a, as a district goal and our hope is to make progress against sort of the setback that we've seen over the past three years due to the pandemic and, and absenteeism. Finally, for ELA on slide seven, for the middle school, the state not only assesses student achievement, but also growth. That's measured by sort of assigning students into a, a peer group and then comparing this, the performance of students against the group that they were in previously. So, based on our, our middle school analysis, we have slightly lower growth in ELA as compared to the rest of the state and similar achievement. So another focus area that we'll have is trying to support all students in their growth as well as achievement. Next, on slide eight, we switch to the high school MCAS results for 2022. And we see that 60% of our students in grade 10 are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA versus 58% statewide. Again, that similar piece about trying to advance our students into the exceeding category would be a goal, as well as trying to move our students from partially meeting to meeting the expectations. Slide nine has the data over the last three years from 2019, 2021, and 2022. Again, our goal is to aim for the 70% mark of meeting or exceeding expectations. The growth calculation is on slide 10 for the high school. We have lower growth in ELAs compared to the rest of the state, but similar achievement. When, at the growth categories, the state considers between 40 and 60 as to being average growth. So when the district growth score is closer to 40 or lower, that's classified as, as lower growth. And slide 11 discusses some of the specific ELA trends and next steps. So, we worked with coordinators to think about what trends that we're noticing and what steps we can take as a district, seven through 12. So, we've thought about really improving the protocols to promote students' best efforts. That means educating students about the purpose of the test, having a, a climate and a culture in the building that lets students do their best work, focusing on growth as well as achievement. Incentivizing attendance and not just for testing purposes, but just acknowledging that students will learn more and achieve more when they can be here and be healthy. So, focusing on instructional time, that means making the most of instructional time in the classroom. That might mean if students finish an activity or do now, thinking about how to use extending activities so that students and staff are using their time well. Communicating openly with families about a student's progress and, and using more common assessments so we can track students' progress over the course of the year. That's part of our understanding by design goal as well. On slide 12, it has some steps that are taken within the department, including this data I'm sharing with you tonight is also analyzed by staff. Our coordinator shares this with staff early in the year and provides data about how students have performed in their class in 2022, and also sort of a historic perspective on how they've done before so that teachers can really know the students in front of them. The second bullet is just setting some goals around student performance. And also, the last, the third bullet discusses the ways in which these are common goals. So, the new frameworks that came out in 2016 aren't just about placing responsibility for literacy on ELA teachers, but really social studies as well and, and informational reading and writing. So, the ELA coordinator works with the social studies coordinator to, to share that data and to include that in social studies teachers' goal setting. Slide 13 has the statewide, so we're switching from ELA and going to math. So these are statewide math results. Students and generally across the state are doing a little bit better in math. Slide 14 focuses on the middle school math results. So on this slide, we see that 43% of our students in grades seven and eight are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 39% statewide. Again, we could say the same thing about the exceeding expectation, meeting expectations categories and partially meeting, that our goal would be to make progress in that direction. Slide 15 has the last three years of math achievement. So, just like in ELA, we've seen that decline since the pandemic and our goal is to have more students in the exceeding or meeting category. Slide 16 talks about the growth. The middle school has slightly higher growth in math compared to the rest of the state and slightly higher achievement. Now we switch to the high school math results. 61% of high school, Silver Lake Regional High School students in grade 10 are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 49% statewide. And over the past three years, our percentage has been 73, 64, and 61. And again, we, we are holding the 70% goal across all content areas. And math achievement has been higher as compared to the state, slide 19, but we have slightly lower growth, so that will be a focus area for us as well. Principal Gill will share a little bit about the math trends and next steps, seven through 12.
Yeah, so you've noticed a lot of similar next steps to ELA and then science and a couple of slides, but it's really important that we identify what accounts for the percentage drop, where are students falling short? Is it in one or more particular topics or areas? And then revealing, you know, when and how are we covering these topics? How are we testing and checking for student understanding? And really focusing on improving student achievement to meet that target goal of 7%. Another, I think, focus area will be to continue or maybe to expand the use of common assessments in the math department, developing a common assessment, implementing a timeline on when to give those assessments, and then coming back together as a math department to look at the student results and data and really try to identify any trends or patterns to adjust our practice moving forward. And then more specifically on the next slide, I think we're on 21 now, right?
That's right.
Uh, thank you. You know, aligning our department goals and our teacher goals to both our school and district goals, specifically setting team goals at the middle school level and then subject area goals, geometry goal and algebra goal at the high school. And really just focusing our department time on moving that new to our students' math.
Thank you. And I would just want to add on top of what Principal Gill said that this, you didn't say this, I'm just adding this in, that this isn't just about test preparation. I don't, we don't want the takeaway to be that our focus is for students just to be better test takers. MCAS is sort of a mandated, it's a mandated assessment that kids across the state take and that's normed and calibrated. So we think that by improving engagement, designing authentic performance tasks, that kids will also do better on a measure like MCAS. So when you see things like on slide 21, like increasing the use of performance tasks, it just doesn't mean that we're doing this for the test, but we think that by engaging kids in better curriculum experiences, giving teachers the autonomy to design sort of collaborative learning experiences, that kids will perform better and also be more engaged in school. So I just kind of want to make the point that it's not, this isn't what we're do, doing just for MCAS, but really we think that that, all of our effort and improvement will result in more engaged students and higher, higher achieving students on this measure that students have to take. Uh, slide 23 has some, has the middle school science MCAS results. Just a reminder that MCAS in math and ELA is grades three through eight and 10. In science, that's five, eight, and in our district, nine. So this is the science MCAS results for grade eight. 45% of our students in grade eight are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 42% statewide in grade eight science. And this, on slide 24, this shows us that in 2022, we had 45% of students meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 44% the year before. Again, across all disciplines, we're striving for the 70% goal. The science MCAS results, 46% of students in grade nine are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 49% statewide. This year was the first year of the, our freshmen in 2022, so they're now sophomores. This was the first year of the next generation assessment for them. In physics, they took that in spring. And then, this is the three-year achievement on slide 26 for science with 2018, 2019, and 2021. There's no 2022 on slide 26 because, as I explained, the assessment was different in 2022 for science because it was next gen, so there's no comparison available to compare the next generation assessment to the state's legacy assessment. Principal Coet is going to talk about some of the next steps in science from slide 27.
So in my last rule, I was hoping for this to occur, that there was going to be a next generation MCAS coming out that matched the 2016 standards, but COVID again said that backwards a little bit. So you can see from slide 27 that we're going to finally get to some next generation MCAS questions in science at the high school level. And that won't no longer be a transfer of knowledge question, but it will be more phenomenon-driven, asking students for depth and what they observe and see and what they can describe. And then you can see in slide 28, talks about that transition again. And as Ryan said, we're, we're not, it's not really about creating better test takers, but in science, it's better thinkers. We're asking students to engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate as scientists. So that's really the work that we're doing. Yes, it involves teachers coming together, common planning, to think about their assessments and their unit planning, but really, how does that come alive in the classroom so students can think like current scientists do now in the field that they're in? And, and part of the pleasure that I have being here is that I watched students, Ryan and I both were in classrooms this morning, watching students on a career path, like presenting their career path as a scientist and telling us how much money they would make and also what jobs, how, who they're going to interview with, and you know, what type of thinking that they're going to do. And it was really powerful because that, that's when it comes alive for them, so.
Yes, I learned that physiatrists do very well. That's what I learned.
Yeah. Ziatrists.
So, yes. Slide 29 has some, just some information about how our students can graduate. So competency determination just is, just fancy language for how students can demonstrate their, they, they can graduate from high school in the state of Massachusetts. So, there's a couple of options in, for the cut scores in ELA and math, but also if students are non-meeting expectations, our schools can offer the educational proficiency plan. In order to meet the competency determination in science, students need to earn a score of 220 on the legacy chemistry or the new standards in biology or physics. Our students though, who are, this is 24 and 25, so juniors are in the class of 2024, they would have taken the legacy one and then 25 are our current sophomores. So, this just gives you information about what students need to be able to do to graduate. You know about growth. And on slide 20, on slide 31, Principal Coet will talk a little bit about additional efforts underway at the middle school.
So we do, we are blessed to have a schedule that has common planning time in it. We're utilizing that, not only to talk about students' social emotional needs, but now also instructional with pedagogy. And we're reviving engagement strategies that we could not do with COVID and behind a computer. We're, I conducted walkthroughs in both separately, but with Jill and then Ryan. And we had great walkthroughs with department coordinators and Nicole was one of those who proudly, we were just so honored to see how students were, teachers were reviving those strategies. We have collaborative department and faculty meetings, so even a faculty meeting I am running, Nicole is also supporting in her department meetings, which has been such a joy to be part of. We're celebrating tiered lesson plans and thinking about how to tier our instruction a little bit more now that we're further, further away from what COVID learning looked like. I'm also implementing select scholar award ceremonies for students that have great academic growth or have overcome adversity or putting in a ton of effort. So, it might not be the students who always get high honors, right? But it's, it's students that are persevering, working hard, and are showing growth even if they're not getting all these. And I know that will also help improve, you know, what the meaning is of these, of these kind of standardized tests that we're seeing here efforts along the way. It's not just about one end of the year or grade at the end of a term. And of course, individual and follow-up conversation I think is most valuable. Even after our walkthroughs, you know, just affirming a teacher and what we saw in those presentations means a ton to them. And I know it shows in student learning as well. So, thanks.
Um, at the high school, we're not as blessed to have common planning time. So it is one thing that, you know, we aspire to create. I might actually start from the I might actually start from the bottom of my slide and work our way up. It's sort of divided, created four different categories in the areas that we need to focus on. So for structure and processes, you know, pre-COVID, we had begun the process of looking at our bell schedule. None of us thought we could change our schedule, and then twenty-twenty happened, and we had to create three different schedules. So now that we know, we can create schedules and modify and change, and we've experienced both teachers and students, different options. I think that working group is in a better place to reevaluate our existing schedule and look at making a change that is more student-centered, but also creates an opportunity for more common planning time for all of our teachers. In terms of instruction, we're going to continue to work on meeting inclusion ratios to make sure our students are provided a least restrictive environment. In terms of data, I'm going to continue to sing the praises of our new data coaches too, if you're sitting behind me right now. Implementing our data coach team, having a data team looking at student attendance, student discipline, MCAS scores, student grades, um, what am I missing? Even the board, I won't. That's the main categories, right? And and looking at the patterns and trends and looking at the big picture and how we can provide holistic support to all of our students. That might just be good teaching practices or tier-one and tier-two interventions in the classroom. And then using that data, both from our data coaches as well as looking at, you know, departmentally, things like MCAS score scores and student achievement to really drive and inform instructional practices. And then going back to evaluate what is and isn't working from there, not just a one and done. We'll continue to offer the Panorama, Acel survey to students up to twice a year to again track and monitor, like provides us some additional data points to look at for our students. And then at the top, teacher support, of course, providing professional development for our co-teaching teams. Working this year, even before bell schedule changed, to really ensure that they get common planning time, which may look like pulling them from a class per day and having a substitute come in so that they can work on unit development together. And then working with our coordinators to identify two to three key instructional strategies to look for through our learning box for the, you know, second half of the semester, reevaluating what, what are we seeing that's working? What do we need to continue to develop? And determining if we need to adjust what we're looking for the second half of the year. Working with our special education team to define support co-teaching, supporting inclusion, and making sure that our staff are receiving the support that they need. And then working with our coordinators, seven through twelve, to help facilitate department meetings that are looking in addition to the content of MCAS tests, but also what is the department data that we can review to increase student achievement? Just things like our pacing if necessary, or maybe there's a topic we need to spend a little bit more time on, or maybe we're showing that our students are great in one area and we don't have to spend maybe as much time there. And so really adjusting our practices and not always feeling like we have to pull up, you know, today's day eighty-seven, here's my lesson plan on day eighty-seven of the school year, right? And just making sure we're meeting the students where they're at to, to raise that achievement.
Thank you, that's our presentation. We appreciate it, we know it's a lot of information, but it's also, it's important. Teachers spend a lot of time looking at it, it's a reflection of how our students are doing, so we appreciate you reviewing it.
So I have a few other questions.
Oh, it's perfect, that's what we're here for.
Okay. So my first question is our seventy percent goal. What's the time horizon on that and how realistic do we think it is? And I ask that because we've got enough of these areas that are in the forty percents. And I mean, just if we're talking about high school forty percents, that means the average grade level is three hundred kids or something like that. That means you've only got about a hundred and forty there at that level, which means you've got to bring up another sixty or so if you hit that number. Like, what's the likelihood of that kind of land?
It's, it's ambitious. The goal is for the results that we receive in the fall of twenty-twenty-four to, to reflect movement in that seventy percent goal. It may have been in this school committee meeting, or it may have been in a different school committee meeting where we discussed the concept that we looked at our scores prior to the pandemic. We looked at our scores this summer, and then we reexamine them after we received our, our scores this year. And we, as a leadership team, committed to striving to reach these goals. Recognizing that our students don't have the luxury of setting a lower bar, that their graduation is dependent upon these scores. And we have committed ourselves to trying new things, focusing on teaching and learning in ways that are research-based and focus on the needs of our students while also maintaining a focus on their social emotional needs and recognizing that if children are hungry or tired or stressed out, they're not in the, the right place to learn. And so we, we recognize that we need to meet not only their social emotional needs, but their academic needs. And we're committed to working with our teachers and our, our leadership team. This is important for us to set the goal and to strive for it. Statistically, how likely is it? I think more importantly is that we set the goal and keep working until we reach it.
Okay. State is raising the standards of what is defined as. And so the goal has to, has to work in that context as well, which is that an already stretched goal is really stretched, I would, I would guess. So have you all really decomposed those goals? I mean, like, by count, by kid kind of thing?
So in terms of student level analysis, those types of things occur at either grade level, department, or support team meetings. And again, by focusing on alignment, focusing on, meaning the, the work that we're doing with curriculum development, focusing on research-based strategies, the work that we do as a leadership team to build our own capacity as instructional leaders, providing professional development support in areas that, that we think will help support our teachers in, in, in the best way possible. By working on all of those things, we hope to improve teaching and learning. MCAS is a measure that we can use to help us determine if our efforts are working. But it's not the only measure of a school's success, nor is it the only measure of a child's aptitude or potential. So we, we're using it because it's something that we, we all have in common. We're also using it because we know our students need to graduate, and they need to pass this test in order to graduate. So we need to find ways to make sure that all students have access to grade level standards and material. And yes, they, they have raised the bar, and we will continue to strive to, to reach that because we know our students, students need our help in getting there. So we've, we've made steps with our inclusive practices as well, which is a research-based strategy to make sure that more of our students are in the least restrictive environment possible for them so that they are more likely to gain access to that grade level material. So by approaching this, by having a multifaceted approach, we hope to realize some gains and reassess in terms of what's working and what's not working and be completely open and honest with the committee in terms of where we fell short and what our next steps are going to be. But we recognize that this is part art, part science, and part nurture.
I want to make an editorial comment as well, for everyone's benefit. Ryan, you said a couple of times, we're not so focused on teaching to test or test-taking service. We're focused on the development of the learning that actually helps with testing and that we, you know, hope then translates or shows up on the test. I, I, I'm going to say this without, without taking a side on whether testing is a good idea or not. The reality is, testing is a reality. And I don't think we need to apologize for developing test-taking skills. The reality is, if you want to be an L-one master tech as an automotive technician, you're going to take something like nine really complex tests that are written-based tests. If you want to be a cybersecurity expert to get the top certifications, you're going to take complex tests. If you want to be a cosmetologist to get state certification, you're going to take tests. If you want to be an intern, you have to pass the bar. There is hardly anything or hardly any profession in which there are not tests and certification tests, and the development of the skill of taking tests is actually an important part of the school system. And I am totally aware of the anxiety and the inequities that can come up and the fact that it's not necessarily a realistic view of how kids are, or whatever the case might be. Not necessarily realistic view of how mechanics are, that sort of thing, and yet they are reality. So I'll just say that as an editorial comment, that it's, I don't think it needs to dominate school, but I don't think we need to apologize either for any of the test data. My last question then was, can we talk a little bit more about data coaches and what we're doing with data coaches and what their kind of jobs are?
Sure, be happy to. So through some grant funding, we were able to create these second positions. Haven't rolled up just yet at the middle school. That's probably because Becky is new and running the room still. But at the high school level, we have one for each grade level. And really, there's sort of like our, our pre-sped referral process, right? So if there are students who aren't responding to best teaching practices or tier-one interventions in the classroom, our data coach can evaluate that student profile, if you will, connect with the student and the family, try to implement some other strategies that might work, whether it's a group of students that they're noticing patterns or trends in, or if it's one specific student who may need some additional interventions or reinforcement in the classroom. It's really an academic support, right? It's not tied into discipline or anything like that. And then
Is it aimed at the student or aimed at the teacher?
A little bit of both. So they, they're sort of two, two-way facing, right? And so the number one person that they're there to support is the student. But in their analysis of the data and in their, their work with the students, right? They can then take that back to department meetings, faculty meetings to share. Here are strategies, or here are patterns that we're recognizing, here are some strategies that we've implemented that are working, almost offering like in-house professional development for our teachers. So that's where it's sort of two-way facing. And then if we're getting to those tier-two or even tier-three interventions and this child is still struggling, that's when they would be referred to the support team. And we would explore the potential of maybe creating a, a difference, create an accommodation plan for that student. So this is sort of all that pre-sped referral process, so. We have a phenomenal, I'm going to tooth their horns for a second, we have a phenomenal team. It's, I'm going to be honest, the second's not that much, but they do an incredible job and they go above and beyond. And I mean, our, our students are, are lucky to have that additional support system in our building, so.
So are they looking, some of the presentation noted item analysis, student analysis, things like that. Are they looking at that sort of thing and then saying, to an eighth-grade science teacher, here are the things that I see in the breakup of your item responses within your classroom and hence, you know, you're strong over here, weak over here, you got subset over here.
That would probably be more at like a department level led by the coordinators. They're looking more at student attendance, right, like sort of student data, but then incorporating those, those best teaching practices for them. Yeah. Great job, guys.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, I noticed one thing. When you were talking about how ELA is sort of trying to coordinate with, or for you to make my words aren't accurate, but you know, work with the social studies department because there's a lot more informational text and things like that. And it's my understanding that the new science curriculum is, well, new science curriculum is very heavy in like informational text and, and trying to go in that direction of like sort of what real-world scientists are, are doing. Is there like cross coordination between the science department also, because you only mentioned social studies?
Yeah, I think they're listed, my memory serves me correctly, it's, it says like literacy in ELA, history and social sciences, and science, technology, and engineering. So I, those skills, there's not, I'm not really sure if those were explicitly part of science teachers' goals, like those, the literacy standards, but I would just say to the, we're looking, in, in all of our departments, we acknowledge that it's, you know, teaching students to analyze a question and respond appropriately. I think all departments, even, I mean, our performing arts, places like where there's a school-wide effort to try to hook into the places that make students better readers. So it should be a goal of science as well, and, and I just don't know if there's that data analysis of how students have performed in ELA has occurred in science, but it's certainly something I could share with the science coordinator as well, but it's, it's a good question. I don't know if that
Which is kind of like a different kind of reading almost, like I feel like it uses a different part of my brain and
I don't know, it's so
It's, it's, it's different.
Yeah.
It's the multidimensionality of, of, of questions. I mean, when you get into performance assessments, those are, part of an assessment is the, being able to break down the text, which actually draws on a lot of critical reading from ELA. It, it's, testing, they've got multidimensionality, so you're testing on multiple dimensions.
A lot of, a lot of our teachers across all departments have been aligned with our school and district goals. And so just to give some examples, right, we're trying to improve reading for content. It's going to look one way in science, but if our auto mechanics teacher, right, it's reading for content, like how are you understanding the manual, right, to repair an engine? And in allied health class, that reading for content looks a little bit different, right, versus an art class or a music class. So there is a lot of overlap, and I think it's just increasing our students, um,
Exposure.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Any other question?
Problem solving, right? It's another one that I've seen a lot of departments. It's a good, a life skill to have.
Any other questions, comments? Just a, a general comment from my perspective, I, what I heard tonight seemed very holistic in looking at this issue and, and, you know, making a plan to, to make improvements. And I, I like the fact that I, that I saw something extremely holistic. I, I don't know that there's a, a, a path to improvement that you haven't thought about and, and tried to, to, you know, include in, in this, in this plan. So I'm, I feel very positive about that. So I just wanted to say that. Okay. Thank you for, again, for that, that was, it was a great presentation, you did it very well as, as well. Superintendent?
Thank you. So since we last met, our administrative team met and reviewed our current district curriculum accommodation plan and the role of the support team, which was highlighted tonight in our MCAS efforts. And the role of the support team in each school to review data and provide interventions and supports for our students who may be struggling. Ryan and I met with the police and fire and, and the principals, met with the police and fire from all three towns to conduct our annual review of our emergency response plans. And we, our principals continued to, we met the, just last week to conduct a drill, and our principals have scheduled
Was it this week?
Yep. Was it this week? Thank you. It felt like last week. Thank you. So we're, we're working with police and fire to make sure that those drills are, are scheduled, and our principals are on top of that. Our principals have also, they've been very busy. I've asked them to create action plans for their goals that align with the district goals. And as you can see, they're already putting many of these things in place. You'll, you'll notice some of the steps that we, as a district, have committed ourselves to in the goals that I presented to you in September and And they're also showing in our MCAS presentation this evening in our principal reports. We will review these plans on November third and we will set a course to track our progress throughout the year. So again, I emphasize that I think it's important that we set a bold, ambitious goal and that we track our progress and that we work together to measure and assess our progress along the way. So that's also part of our, our growth as instructional leaders that we have also committed ourselves to, to tracking this progress and thinking about what may be working or what's not working and addressing it as we give things enough time to determine whether or not it's having a positive impact. In your packet, you'll find a budget timeline. Principals have been asked to start soliciting input from their staff to build their budgets. They have been asked to provide budget narratives as well as a multi-year capital plan for your consideration. This year, the principals were provided with an outline of what should be included in their budget narrative to help guide that process. And just some highlights, in December, we'll have a joint meeting. And we have asked our administrator of special education, our technology director, the elementary curriculum coordinator to present on current and possible future program needs. In January, Christine and I will present the school committee with the FY twenty-four preliminary budget with input from our entire administrative team and our principals. And in February, the chairman of the school committee, the school committee members and the superintendent will hold the FY twenty-four public budget hearing. And in March, the school committee will be approving the FY twenty-four budget for the transmittal to the town. And in the spring, we look forward to our town meetings. It's at this point of the year where we start asking you to think about what your goals or priorities will be for the FY twenty-four budget and anything that you would like us to consider in that process. And if, and I can, I'm going to keep going and I, just pausing in case there were questions, sorry. Also, in your electronic folder, you'll see some data which I cannot see on the screen at this hour. So I, I put paper copies from my, from my own cell for this information because I didn't want to give you misinformation. So one of the charts you'll see, you'll see homeschool enrollment broken out by towns in grade levels, K through six. And you'll, and overall, homeschooling has decreased since last year. And in homeschool enrollment, grade seven through twelve, homeschool has, enrollment has decreased overall. In the town of Halifax, it has gone up by one student. And in the town of Plimpton, it has gone up by one student. The other chart you will see in your packet is Halifax, Kingston and Plimpton student enrollment, grades K through six. These are the October first enrollment numbers. And you'll also see below that, grades seven through twelve. And you'll see increases across all three towns in terms of enrollment, grades seven through twelve as compared to last year. The next chart in your packet is the October first enrollments in their traditional format with new color coding by town. Thank you, Karen. And if you look from, from the left to the right, on the left-hand side, you'll see each of the towns, Halifax in yellow, Kingston in green, Plimpton in an orange type color. And then the, the tuitioned in totals kind of in a purplish fuchsia color. The grand totals, the elementary totals are towards the middle of the page. The middle school totals by town are next, and then broken down by grade. You'll see the high school total for each town. You'll see the middle school and high school totals combined. And then the grand totals for each of the, the schools by town. The reason why we compile the data in this way is to help us with our assessments, which you'll see on the next set of charts. If you look at the Silver Lake FY twenty-four assessment percentages, you'll see that Halifax remains steady at thirty point eight percent. Kingston has declined. It has gone from fifty-eight point two percent to fifty-seven point nine percent. And Plimpton has increased from eleven point one percent to eleven point three percent. Below that, you'll see the FY twenty-four shared cost percentages. Halifax has decreased from last year. It was thirty point four, it's now twenty-nine point eight. Kingston has increased, it was fifty-six point six, it's now fifty-seven point seven. Last year, Plimpton was thirteen percent, and this year it has gone down to twelve point five percent. So those are the shared costs and Silver Lake assessment percentages for your review. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have on any of those topics.
Anyone have any thoughts or questions? Okay, seeing none?
Oh, go ahead.
The enrollment increase that we saw in twenty twenty-three this year, is that possibly the homeschool kids coming back? A handful? Think so? As opposed to new students or anything that from construction?
Yeah, because we, we know that homeschool has declined, so, yes.
Right. I was thinking it was all one off, except the other. I just want to make a point that, that, you know, I hear every now and again that the schools are jam-packed and we're over capacity in a sense. But I don't see it based on the numbers that are in front of us. Enrollment is down over ten years, it looks like. So I assume that means we are ample with space. We don't need a capital plan expenditure on the horizon for more space?
Not going to the third floor?
Don't do a widow's walk or something.
We do still have several teachers that share classrooms, but we're making it work.
I figured so. I mean, it's kind of amazing how grown is three towns, yet we have less students somehow. But anyways, just wanted to put that out there.
It's the demographics of the greater recession. Greater recessions, which is a horror show for higher education. Child bearing went way down now. Is that group ages through school and starts to go to college? All the colleges desperate financial.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Is that everything you wanted to cover, Jill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All righty. Full business, new business, anything we want to bring up under new business?
Can I ask this superintendent a question after she's done?
Sure.
Can we talk about the current situation that's going on with the district? We don't have, we don't have new students in our building. Is that not being discussed tonight at all?
So I, I certainly can answer your question. We found out on Monday from the town of Kingston. They contacted us to let us know that they had received word that we anticipate approximately twenty students in our schools. So that's Kingston Elementary, Kingston Intermediate, Silver Lake Middle and Silver Lake High School. I reached out to principals to see what they had found out. Some of the, some of our principals had been contacted by, by the, by the state to give them a heads up around the same time that the town found out. And we believe at this time, the greatest number of students are going to KES and KIS. That was based on the preliminary information. We have had some students. Again, it's my understanding that there may have been students registered at KES today, but I don't know that officially yet from the, the building principal in Kingston. We don't know the exact number. We don't know the grade level. We've been given a ballpark figure of twenty. Tonight, before this meeting, I received a call from Anne Marie Stronach from the Department of Education, reaching out to me to let me know that Department of Education is committed to helping us, whether it be with translation services and advocating for additional funding based upon the, the needs of the students and people coming to our school and working out a number, proposing a number that would help support the schools with the additional costs. But again, we, until the students have registered and until we know what their needs are and until we know what grade levels, there's not much else we can do other than wait and anticipate that we, you know, we, we could see some increase in class size or we could need some additional resources depending upon the needs of the students.
Okay, a lot of questions. The, I, I understand that the preliminary numbers were around twenty. I've heard numbers as high as thirty-seven in our district, joining our district, whether or not they're in the middle and high school. I mean, that's the meeting we're in right now. So I don't, we don't need to talk about what's going on in Kingston. But my, my primary concern here is, is I hear you say things like assisting us and advocating for more money and resources. Like what, that doesn't, nothing in life is guaranteed, right? So, so that's not guaranteed that we are going to be provided those resources. You know, there are conversations happening like, you know, the cost is going to be supplemented in order to help us assist and meet the needs of these learners that are coming into our district. But I guess we have to have the very frank conversation that what if that doesn't happen? I mean, we know all the time that the state doesn't always provide us the funding that we need to give the students that we have already in-house, the resources that they need to meet their educational goals. So my concern is, as a district, are we going to be able to meet the needs of these students? Do we have the resources? What if these resources that we need to provide them are not compensated? You know, I, I don't expect you to answer any of these questions right now, but these are just questions going through my head. You know, what does this reimbursement rate look like? And is it a hundred percent? Is it five percent? What does that timeline look like? Often, we're sitting here waiting for money from the state and we don't know when it's going to come to us, you know?
It was also shared from, with me by the town, the Kingston Town Administrator that there is a bill going to be proposed also to support schools in this situation. Again, I know that that's not a guarantee. I can only share with you what I currently know. And I, our principals can't tell you and I can't tell you what, what we may or may not need because we don't know what those needs are. And there may not be any additional, you know, staffing needs, but there may be an increase in transportation, for example. We don't know what the impact will be at this point.
But if I could just say one thing, you heard about twenty and that's sort of what I had heard. You heard almost a double number of thirty-seven. And about twenty is what you heard from the Kingston Town Administrator?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, so, I mean, that, that number is drastically different.
Right. And I know that this situation is, is developing very rapidly and none of us were aware that it was even coming our, our way. And that's concerning in and of itself. But pertaining to this meeting and this, this school committee, I just brought up transportation, like that also raises concerns for me. I know we struggle already in transportation, not only for our regular day kids, but for our out-of-district placement children. So, you know, I have like five hundred questions that follow up on that. Like if these children are already at school here and then they move, are, are we still somewhat responsible for, for them? If, if they maintain Kingston residency, but they, we determined that we can't meet their needs here in this district, are we going to be faced with extraordinary costs transporting them to a place where they, their needs can be met? You know, I, I just have like a cascade of questions. And I fully understand, respect the fact that they probably can't be answered straight because we are all still learning as the situation's developing. But I think it's important that we realize that there could be some very real financial consequences, consequences to this. And moving forward, I think it's important to keep the committee like abreast of the situation because just financially, what it can do to our budget is very concerning for me.
I'm going to guess by the next school committee meeting, December eighth, we'd be in a better position to know where these students land and, yeah, with the needs and.
And how long do we anticipate them staying with us, you know? And, and it's also my understanding that there, again, what I heard, that there are over sixty minors, at least according to the Kingston Town Administrator in the press conference he gave, he said that there are sixty-four minors and there was a baby born on Sunday in Kingston as part of this cohort. And that being said, if the number is only twenty that were enrolling in our schools, that means there's forty-four at least children that are going to be coming up the pipeline. How are we going to be able to meet their needs also?
Right, I, I'm going to.
This is a very large conversation and I just wanted to make sure that we're not ignoring it.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it's also very fluid, you know, you talk about the ones coming up in, in the pipeline.
Who are they not seeing?
Exactly, exactly, so.
You don't know, but now I just don't want to ignore the elephant in the room here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all righty. The bullying intervention, thank you again for the, the presentation earlier this evening. Reports of standing committees, Silver Lake Educational Association.
Hi, everyone. I feel like most people know me by now. Actually, just as a refresher, I coach a mural soccer program. I teach freshman English and senior English. And I am a data coach for the junior class. Gordon, to speak a little bit more, so to give you like a clearer picture. Nicole, the department head for, for ELA, she's going to work more big picture with some of the data. Like for me as the junior coach, like I'm looking at kids who have one or more F right now before, before report cards come out. And like, how can we help some of these kids? Because one F turns into two and there's a snowball effect. And two or more Fs and the kids are not engaged in things because they can't participate in things and then there's less buy-in from them. So like, how do we solve these problems? And then, you know, if a kid has three Fs, but like, oh, there's a C and Sean doesn't have insight class, like Sean, how are we making this happen? Like what are those benefits that you're seeing that are transferable in these other classes? How can we help the student there? How can we help the teachers with some of the methods that you're using? So it's really a two-way street, but it starts with the students. And that's really it, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
How, how are you pulling grades from Power School?
Yeah, Power School has pretty much everything that you could ever want.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, including M C S A as well, so.
Okay.
And just, just to flow a little in. So if you're all, so if you're all on the floor.
Thank you, but, but no, thank you.
So like do some witchdoctor-y stuff out of poverty's foot because she has to come in.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you for that. Administrative review?
We just had a meeting prior to this meeting with Jill to go over her goals. And she actually just summarized them when she was talking about the MCAS review and how we're supporting students. So I'm not going to go over them again. Part of the new evaluation system that we codified in our policy last year was to have a mid-cycle formative meeting. That's a conversation just to see where we are with goals and if we need to make any adjustments mid-cycle so we can come into the summit of evaluation, ready to present to the school committee.
Excellent, thank you. CTE.
So Elliot had his advisory dinner last week and Michaela sent out a beautiful paper. It was in the lobby of the high school. It was like walking into a completely different building. Lucas and I were able to attend. Ryan was there as well. And the amount of energy in the room, just having the advisors back in the building again, being able to walk into the shops and the presentation by the football captain senior, who is also the president of Skills USA, really drove home the importance of our CTE program to our students and our kids and giving them that opportunity to develop not just the shop skills, but the leadership skills as well. And just want to say bravo to Elliot on that. We are going to have a CTE meeting on November seventeen, I believe at five or five-thirty. I'm not quite sure about the date right now to start talking about some of the items that this committee has talked about broadly and start investigating some possibilities for expanding CTE in the future.
Excellent, we look forward to hearing those updates.
Money that went for.
All righty, chairman's report correspondence. We do have on November second, which happens to be my wedding anniversary, the conference coming up.
Is that what you're saying?
I don't, I don't believe so. We should probably vote a delegate to attend. Are you, are you attending, Jason?
I am attending and I'm already Plimpton's delegate, but I am allowed to serve more than one committee if that's your pleasure. I will be there for the delegate to sit with me once we have three classes.
Okay.
I make a motion that basically Frasier represents.
I make a motion that basically, Fraser represents Silver Lake and be the delegate at the M A S C conference on November second.
I second, third, and fourth.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. I have attended in the past, I, I haven't the last several years, but I have actually gone. It is very interesting, it's very eye-opening. If, if you have the chance to go sometime, it, it's a very well-worth event to experience and, and participate in, to be honest with you. So, thank you, Jason.
May I ask a question about that? I was actually potentially toying with the idea of going. Is it too late for us to go?
May I?
Hmm, sure.
So being as local as we are, and maybe with some of your work hours, if you'd like to just jump down and attend for an afternoon or a morning, just let me know. You can come as my guest, and I'd be happy to, to see all of you come down. Amy's coming down on Friday as my guest, and I extend that to all of you around the table. If anybody'd like to just jump in, especially if you've never been, you might not want to make the full commitment. Take a look at when, you know, some items of interest pop up and just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, wonderful, thank you for that.
That's my legislative report.
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah, not get into anything tonight.
Oh, good, good, thank you. Negotiations, we have met, we're gonna be meeting in executive session after this meeting. PAC?
So we had a meeting, sorry, I have been dealing with Larnedus for a week. We had a meeting on October sixth. It was primarily housekeeping. There wasn't really any agenda items advanced. Basically, the big, the other big item was they presented the auditor's report, which was very similar to what Christine presented tonight and what our auditor presented tonight. No serious concerns, it was a very clean audit. And then we had a reorganization. So that was pretty much it when we adjourned.
Okay, excellent, very good, thank you. Policy.
We're probably gonna have a meeting early in the new year, twenty twenty-three. There's been some language recommendation updates to some policies, unfortunately, some that we just recently passed over. Yeah, so we just need to come back together probably early twenty twenty-three to take a look at some of those items.
Okay, thank you. Revolving funds, no meeting, safer.
Safer, so as part of meeting with Elliot at his advisory dinner, we went out back behind the woodshop to look at the air handler. And I know that's part of our capital plan this year. And I don't think a lot of people realize that when we redid the buildings, that the CTE department is the original construction from nineteen seventy-six, and the air handler is also from nineteen seventy-six. So this will upgrade the air quality for our students and our teachers who participate in that wing of the building. Glad to see that finally taking place. We will be also having tri-town meetings with our collective partners, building up Chris's excellent work and communicating to need for HVAC systems for our two buildings and trying to lead that process forward. So trying to make it convenient for our town partners having multiple meetings on one minute, so that'll be on December first.
Okay, I think there's a prep meeting for that. I want to say November eighteenth off the top of my head. I did jot it down for this evening, and I, I'm not sure with my notice, but I do believe we have a, a meeting for safer in November as well. Could probably find it.
I've been at home since six o'clock this morning, my phone just died, so I can't check my calendar.
Yeah, I'm, I could find it on this if I, if I wanted to as well. Okay, school start time. I don't think we've had anything with that. Yep, yep.
I could provide a quick update, I work with Emily on that. We've met twice since the beginning of the year. Emily's putting together a website just to educate people about school start times. She would like, I think the goal would be to provide an update to the chairs at the chairs meeting. And there's a survey that the group wanted to send out, seven through twelve. But we've met twice, and she just wanted me to provide that update.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Treasurer's Report.
Just have, just have a spot, right?
It says.
We have a, we have one off, off-cycle warrant, and that was for payroll of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Union thirty-one. We have not met.
We met for the, the Silver Lake program discussion and an update from the Department of Education.
Yep, that's right. So I think most of the people here were probably on that meeting. We did have a joint meeting. And in the joint meeting, it was voted to, in good faith, pursue adding the preschool under the regional agreement umbrella. We met with Desi to give that update to them a couple of days later. We did provide that update to Desi. They were pleased to hear it. And Jill and Russ Augment might comment as you see fit. Desi originally sort of wanted us to try and get that regional agreement update done in the fall of this year, like currently. And there's no way we could be prepared to do that and put that before the towns. There's no facility to even do that, there's no, you know, ability to do that. So we will be doing that in the spring. Desi was going to go to their board and see if we could get a waiver since we won't have that done by December first. And we're meeting with Desi again, I think it's in two weeks, to give them, to hear an update from them. So fill in any gaps that I may have left from the joint meeting discussion, and Desi.
I would just add that the waiver would allow us to continue functioning as we have been since, I think, two thousand and four?
At least.
At least. So it wouldn't be any change to us in terms of staffing or program, but it would, the waiver would allow us to continue to function in this way until the, the towns could vote and potentially make pre-K part of our regional agreement.
So the only thing I'd add to that is it also gives you one additional year beyond this one to deal with the special ed side of it. So the pre-K amendment only deals about half. And it really is roughly half as far as staffing goes.
I will gladly take that extra year of tax to give us some.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay. Okay, single warrant.
I do have information on that. On October fourteenth, nineteen accounts payroll warrants totaling one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. And three payroll warrants totaling two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and two cents were sent out to our subcommittee electronically, and they were returned and payments were issued. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, some dates to remember before we adjourn. November eighth is service day for teachers, no school. November eleventh is Veterans Day. November twenty-third, early release for Thanksgiving recess. December first is, again, as noted earlier, the tri-town meeting. And December eighth is our next Silver Lake meeting. What I would like to do now is get a motion to adjourn to go into executive session, not to return to public session. And we would like to use this space here. So maybe a ten-minute break, and then if we could, everyone involved in the executive session meet in, in this space right here would be great. So if I could have.
We made a motion to adjourn from regular session not to return for purposes of executive session under chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, M G L, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law and including the approval of the executive session minutes from six to twenty-two, seven fourteen, twenty-two, and nine eight, twenty-two.
Okay, I'm gonna, seconded, okay, I'm gonna roll call, Jason?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
Just, yeah, good.
Yeah.
And myself, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.